Four minutes.
One minute, one minute. Standby. All right, and ten. I'm sorry.
Janet was a little early, she was just rehearsing.
Are you ready?
Yeah, are you guys ready?
Absolutely.
Okay, here we go.
And five, four, three, two, go.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this evening, Monday, September 28th. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, aired live, and being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. If we can begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence.
Yes, there is correspondence for this meeting. An emailed letter from Ms. Heather Sullivan dated September 17th, expressing her interest in serving on the Superintendent Search Committee. All of the correspondence is for the Superintendent Search Committee, so I'm going to just say the names. An emailed letter from Erin Horniac, received on September 17th. Ms. Kathy Rosoto for September 17th. Ms. Christine Veins dated September 17th. Mr. Larry Starr dated September 18th, and Mr. Kevin Shea dated September 18th, all expressing their interest in serving on the Superintendent Search Committee. I know we received others since then, but they, we have to receive them by Wednesday at noon to make it onto this list, so.
All right, thank you. We have no visitors this evening, so I will entertain school committee comments. Ms.?
I just wanted to comment on one of the letters, Kathy Rosoto. So, when I brought up that plan, I was thinking that she would be the person, you know, she'd be the teacher, or she could select the teacher. So I wasn't thinking that she'd have to apply necessarily, she was, I was thinking she'd be an automatic, I'm not sure if I made that clear.
And I think, when I responded to her, I had kind of indicated that as well.
I kind of talked to her a little offline, too, and said, like, Janet and I reiterated the same thing to her twice.
Yeah, I didn't want her to think that it wasn't, that was what I was thinking.
Okay, any other school committee comment?
Well, I just wanted to quickly congratulate Long Meadow High School Football, Sam, for just squeaking it out over East Long Meadow. They, good, especially because I know you guys lost a lot of seniors last year, so, seems like they're off to a really good year so far, so keep it up.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Liz?
I wanted to quickly see if we can make a couple adjustments to the search committee group, because I guess I feel like maybe we can consider some other people that maybe would like to be on this initial search committee, so I wondered if we could maybe add a t- another teacher, and someone from the town, maybe the town manager, and...
Okay, so just to review, if you don't mind, so what we had decided at our last meeting was six parent representatives, one representing each of our six schools, one assistant superintendent, one school principal, one teacher representative, one senior citizen, and one high school student. So you, and I will just say that Dr. Rush had suggested it being an odd number. Should it get to a situation where they're choosing to recommend candidates moving forward, if there were to be a tie, having even number would be more difficult. So with that in mind, so you're suggesting to add more teacher representation and the town manager?
Yes, yes.
I was thinking more teacher representation might be nice.
Okay.
Can I ask for the rationale for that? Why do we need more teachers on there?
Because they're coming to work with the, with the superintendent, and then the other reason is because Kathy Rosoto, if she's on it, she's also the ELA president, so she, I don't know if she can represent kind of both.
I was thinking one, like, at the elementary level, one at the middle school level, and one at the high school level.
Right.
I just, the teachers have to deal directly with the superintendent on a day-to-day basis, and the principals and...
Well, if I could, though, strictly speaking, they don't. They deal with the principal. Chain of command is the, from teacher to prin- from teacher to department chair, if there is one, to principal, and the principals deal with the superintendent. There's a phrase, and I'll throw it out, I hope it's not going to be too offensive, "The inmates running the asylum." I mean, if we're going to have accountability and a superintendent who's in charge of things, then I think they should have authority over people and not feel they have to be answerable. In the last ten years or so, I've seen an increasing amount of shifting of authority to the rank and file, and I don't know if that's all that good. I'm being very frank here. I like accountability. You say, "This is what's going on in this building, you're in charge of it, there's a problem here, take care of it." So, I'd say principals, which we're incorporating into our structure.
We don't have...
We do have one school.
But those, I'm not trying to say this is a revelation from on high, this is my take on, based on someone who's spent some time inside the system. Accountability requires delegating authority and holding people accountable. That's my view.
Any other feelings on...
Yeah, I would just, one of the, one of the comments, because I saw Larry Starr's email to the committee, and he had asked why we didn't include a community member, so I would say that if we were going to make, I mean, I know we have to add two to make it a functioning sort of body.
Well, we can add as many, you know...
I know, what I'm saying is, we can't add more, one more, we have to add two, or take one away.
It has to be added in even increments, right?
So, I would support adding an additional community member. You know, and I will say that the feedback I received from Kathy when I spoke to her was a question about why there wasn't at least, why there weren't more teachers represented on the committee, and so, you know, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, because I think we try to be very inclusive in how we did, how we did this. But if we are going to add more positions, then I would be supportive of an additional teacher and a general community member. And maybe if it's a teacher, although we don't want to, you know, pick and choose, I would say maybe someone who's not on the executive committee of the LEA or on the bargaining teams, maybe just a general population teacher, just for a different sort of perspective. But, again, I don't have a preference, so whoever applies, applies.
All right, any feelings down this side?
I think that later that night, if I had more time to really think about the composition of the committee, I think I probably would have added more teachers and a general community member as well, and the town manager. So, I think all of those make sense, it's just a question of do we want to change the process at this point or not.
Right. The good news is we're not too deep into it, so we can still kind of do it and not wreck anything.
Right. One other subgroup that's not represented, represented that had been before is somebody from special education.
Oh, right.
Good call.
Special education. And whether that be a teacher, whether that be a parent, whether that be a parent, I don't know, but if, if we're looking at adjusting it, perhaps we need to consider that subpopulation as well.
So how many people are on it right now, just...
Right now is eleven.
So if we add...
And Dr. Rush had recommended nine, eleven, or thirteen. I think we're going to exceed that with, with what we're tossing around here, because I don't think it's fair at this point to remove anybody, any position that we've currently listed. Just because that information has been made public, and we have been giving, they're getting responses from those. What's the thought if, because Kim, I heard you say a teacher representative from each level?
And Kathy could be the middle school.
With the teacher representative, maybe if we had Kathy being both, doing a joint role of middle school and LEA president, so then that would be adding two teachers, one from each, from elementary and high school. You know, I've heard somebody mention town manager.
I mean, I know, well, he had requested to be part of the process, and...
And I have spoken with Stephen since, and, and we've come to an understanding, but if we're amending, I'm certainly willing to...
I think he would appreciate it.
He's also a parent at Center School.
Right.
The one thing I'll say about including the town manager, and I, you know, I spoke with him, and, you know, obviously have a lot of respect for him and his opinion on this, but I said to him that if we have you on the committee, it's the same thing as having one of us on the committee, and the idea is that we're not, you know, we're the people who, I mean, we have a lot of background knowledge on a lot of the stuff, and we do bring a certain level of expertise to the table, and that can be intimidating or influential in the decision, and I think, you know, having people who don't necessarily have the same sort of inside-baseball knowledge that we kind of all deal with, and, you know, the same sort of, the same sort of effect is probably helpful, and I said, and I think that he found that to be a very valid...
Right, and I think, just as a reminder, Dr. Rush did suggest not having anybody who was employed by the district for that very same reason of...
Yeah, and I told him that that's what Dr. Rush had said, so...
Influence, you know, not that anybody would come and try to exert that, but parents sitting on a committee, you know, maybe looking to somebody who is employed by the district for, you know, oh, well, I'm not really sure, so, so I'll kind of go that way. I mean, we already had broken that rule with saying we have an assistant superintendent, a principal, and a teacher representative on there, so I don't see at this point that adding more Long Meadow employees is a big deal. Now, Michael, you had said community member, would you be willing to consider special education in place of a community member?
Yeah, I mean, with the, in the interest of keeping, you know, keeping it sort of tight...
Even numbers.
And even numbers.
Because right now, if we add an elementary teacher representative, a high school representative, town manager, that's three, so we either need to add one...
Or four.
Or three.
Right. I would be, I would be supportive of, you know, I understand that we do need to keep it kind of tight, I, I think that the, the special ed, no sue, you can't come off, you can't come off the committee.
That's between you and Mr. Mass, so we've discussed that before.
I would say, I mean, I think that we, you know, have, we still have a ways to go in ensuring that special education parents are still well-represented before this committee, and I think we've done a good job of, you know, more recently engaging SEAL, and I think they've got great leadership. That being said, not giving them a seat at the table is a mistake, and we do need to give them a seat at the table, because they do make up a very, you know, significant portion and important portion of our population, so...
Right.
And budget, all those things, I mean, we can't ignore, we shouldn't, and we can't.
Right, so, so then what I'm hearing from everybody is two more teachers, John?
You're not hearing from me...
I, I know, I know.
...that we ought to put the town manager on there. I think the town manager is a paid employee, answerable, and responsible to the select board, and I don't see why we have to put someone like that and to bring that bias to this process. We're going to have enough of that down the road, we always do. But, I just remind the committee that the town manager works for the select board, and that's his principal interest, his survival.
That's a fair point.
Okay.
However, they, the town manager also works very, very closely with the superintendent.
Yeah, but we gave him a visiting session, you know, we did, you know...
I understand.
And again, I mean, I'm going to reiterate what I just said a minute ago, and I know you have your hand on Michelle, so I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's okay.
But I think, you know, having someone who does bring the level of authority to the table that Stephen would, or that, it's like, I mean, or anybody really would that's on this committee, it is, it has the potential to be an influential part of that board or that committee, and I think that that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for people who, you know, make a very unbiased opinion and bring us a set of people that we can evaluate further.
And, and before, let me just reiterate to him, so, is, do you see him having more influence on this committee than the LEA president and teachers?
I mean, that's, that's a really great question, and I think to a certain extent I do, because, you know, again, I mean, the teachers are obviously part of the, they're part of the community, so is Stephen, but I think that the role that they play is a very different role, and, you know...
I was just curious, is, you know, the way you're wording it.
Right, and I think that, I think that they are not of the same sort of level of authority the way that the town manager is, they don't have the same fiduciary responsibility, you know, they don't have the same political role, they're, you know, they're teachers, and they have an important role, and they're some, they're people who can bring an educational perspective to the table. Certainly Kathy brings a little bit more authority with her as the president of the union, but I think that, you know, she's there representing teachers' interests, you know?
I was just curious.
And I would say that sometimes the town's interests and the school's interests are not always aligned, you know, but I would say that more often than not, the teachers' interests and our interests are very much aligned.
Okay.
Except at the bargaining table, but...
Michelle, I'm sorry.
That's okay, a couple thoughts, I, I think I like having more educational perspectives on the committee, so if, obviously we can't have everybody, but I, I do like keeping the extra teachers on the committee, or adding teachers to the committee. I also was concerned that we didn't, we had missed sort of a subgroup of people that didn't fit into any of the criteria, so I, I don't want to leave out someone from the community that isn't a senior citizen and that isn't a parent, because I think, you know, they have a lot at stake as well, so I don't know where we're at with numbers.
All right, so we currently have eleven, if we add two teachers, that brings us to thirteen, which is still the odd number. So I guess what's still, what we're still discussing is community member, town manager, and special education.
Oh, right, and I, so I would absolutely support the special education addition.
Unless anybody can think of any...
You're talking special education parent, right?
Yes, unless Mark wants to...
Because if, if you're not, I'll have special ed staff, trust me, on this committee.
Well, I know, yeah.
Oh, is that why you're raising your hand?
Yeah, so you've got that kind of covered already.
Right, but you're also...
I think it's important to have a special ed parent.
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe one of the parents can be special ed, because our parents have kids who are regular and special ed, and they represent both sides.
Right, so you're saying that there may very well be a parent...
A parent who has both.
Who's already one of these six, who might represent both sides.
I think you're going to get a lot of crossover.
I think the truth is, and very much piggybacking off what you just said a second ago, is that I don't think we're going to be able to carve out, especially when it comes to the school population, anybody that sits at, like, or fits a specific, you know, sort of bucket of what we want filled, I mean, we're going to have people filling elementary who also have high school parents, and it's...
Unless it's a parent who's a teacher who has...
Right.
Well, unless you have a parent...
Which is a potential.
Of a single chi- of an only child, you know, then you would have just that one niche, but you're right, we, parents who have responded thus far, you know, well, I have a child in elementary and middle, or I have middle and high school, and, you know, so there would certainly be crossover...
But I, I don't think we should hang up on those technicalities, so I, and I guess that's why I brought that up, so I think, I agree with Michelle that we should include a general community member, you know, especially like, you know, listen, my friends' parents don't have kids in school anymore, by and large.
And they're not seniors.
And they're not seniors, but a lot of them came out and voted for the high school, and a lot of them still care about what's going on in this community, but at the, and so I think we need to, we need to include, at the very least, a parent representative of the special education community and a community member.
So that would make it fifteen, then?
Done.
Okay, so if...
And no town manager?
And no town manager, no offense, Stephen.
Okay. Stephen, if you're listening, that was Michael, not me.
That killed it!
But so, so what's on the table right now with, with kind of combining what everybody's saying, not everybody, John, I'm sorry, but what people are saying is that to add two teachers, one elementary, one high school, with Kathy being the middle school rep and the LEA rep, one general community member, and one special education parent representative? Am I...
And are we considering that a member of SEAL or just generally, doesn't matter?
I would say any general, I mean, SEAL is welcome to, you know, any member of SEAL is certainly welcome to...
I would imagine that the majority of, at least, people on the SEAL board or members of SEAL would apply if, if they had the option. Well, I'm not going to say the majority, I'm imagining many of them will, yeah.
If they had that opportunity.
Okay.
Did, did I miss anything that anybody was saying, or...
So we'll move it to fifteen people.
So...
So I move we amend the, I move we amend the...
Composition of the...
The composition of the preliminary search committee to reflect the additions that you just named.
Of four positions.
Of four people, two teachers, one special education parent, and one general community parent, or not parent, general community member.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Russ?
Well, I just, so, to clarify, though, you're saying one elementary teacher and one high school teacher?
Yes.
And, but earlier you mentioned that it would be, that would be subject to the normal lottery, is that the idea?
Right, but Kathy, Kathy would be as the middle school and LEA president, sorry, middle school teachers, but I, I think that that would be the only fair way to do it.
Without having to find, without making it a committee of seventeen.
Right, without jumping it up to seventeen.
Yeah.
Unless we take Sue off, but I don't want to do that.
Really have a preference of how we select the teachers, so as long as they're on, it's fine with me.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote, so all those in favor of adding the four positions to the current search committee? Okay, all right, well, thank you, Liz, for, for bringing that up, I know that came from a couple different places, so we will make, I will make sure to put something together to have that added to the website, and then to, to let both the general community member, Mark, maybe it's SEAL next week of letting special education know, but certainly it'll be publicized as, as everything else has been.
We could probably, should we, can we send in another email to the community on it, or is it announcing that we've opened... it? Or is it announcing that we've opened up a few more slots if anyone?
Sure. Sure. I, I'll put all of that together.
The school community and we can post it on the website.
Right, it'll be on the website.
Is it December second that they?
December second.
Need to be available?
Russ?
I think we probably need to let the students know more directly.
Right.
To somehow.
Oh.
The high school student.
Were we supposed to include a student on this thing?
Yes.
Did we, we opened it. Yeah, you're right.
High school student.
You're gonna do it?
One.
Right. I'll, I think I'll.
We could have Mr. Schwartz do it.
I forgot that we had.
I'll say I'm gonna buy.
Well, I mean, he was elected to be.
Right. But I'll let Mr. Dunkerly know as well in case there were any other students who might be interested, or if Sam's, you know, busy on December second.
He'll be free.
He'll be free. He's freeing himself up. And I will say that I did reach out to Amy Sada, who is the director at the senior center, um, who was more than gracious to send out an email to her constituents and was very gracious in letting us know that if ever we want to, um, get information out to the senior community, she gave me deadlines for their newsletter, which hits a lot more people. So she was very, very gracious with that. So thank you, Amy. Um, you know, we're trying to get the word out everywhere we can. We've got it in Long Meadow News, the reminder, our website. Um, if anybody can think of anything else or where it needs to be added, please let me know. Any other school committee comments? All right. And there is no, oh.
Oh, sorry, Liz. Sorry.
There's a whole of comments tonight.
I know, really. Um, so we've got the MCAS score through the state, we know the state scores or our school's score back. And just maybe if you can let us know when the students will be, parents will be receiving their kids' MCAS scores.
I have it. Let me look into it and get back to you in a minute.
Okay, thanks. I'm sure everyone's eagerly waiting by the mailbox.
We're just waiting to record them because they have to go out to schools and get copied and, and so we'll let you know.
Chop it up to bits.
When did you get a report?
All right. Anything else? All right. So, the superintendent's report.
Okay. Uh, practice drills are going on throughout, um, our six schools. The police and fire work closely with our principals to make sure that safety drills are conducted. The high school worked with the police and fire departments. First, three drills were practiced simultaneously, an off-campus threat and accompanying shelter-in-place lockdown, two canine search of student lockers, locker rooms and bathrooms, and three, moving large groups of students from one part of the building to another area within the building. The police and fire departments worked closely with the high school staff in order to make sure that the drills were successfully implemented. Pam Chaplin, Gary Fontaine, and Owen Ekron of the Long Meadow Police Department, and Jay Mascada from the Long Meadow Fire Department were all helpful with the implementation, and they offered tips to improve the next drills. Um, back to school nights. All six schools have now completed back to school nights for our parents. During these informative sessions, parents meet teachers and learn more about what children will experience in the upcoming year. Special thanks go to our administrators and staff for the time and enthusiasm during these special evening programs that are so well attended by our parents. High school program for seniors. The special program committee identified seniors as transitioning to colleges one area where we provide more support for students. Shelley Warren and Tom Landers have worked with their staff in order to provide a program on October fourteenth. Tom Landers summarized the program as follows. Seniors will meet in the LHS auditorium and hear from two separate panels of speakers. The first will address issues regarding the college admissions process and will offer students advice and insights regarding the process. After a short break and stretch of legs, the second panel of college, um, representatives and students from Wenoo and Springfield College will discuss the realities of college and campus life and will share pertinent information and advice regarding issues such as balancing of academics, time management, college roommate issues, drug and alcohol dangers, sexual assaults on college campuses, resources for students on most colleges' campuses, et cetera. I think this is really something that deserves accolades because it's the first time that we're being proactive in reaching out to address some of our seniors' anxiety and helping them figure out what's going to happen in college. Um, the high school building project. We're delighted to report that Mass Chips notified us this week that our submission met all the requirements to verify that the project achieved our sustainability goals and has complied with the MSBA requirements. A huge amount of data was submitted by OMR Architects, Gilbain Construction, and the district in order to complete the project. Particular thanks go to Paul Dunkerly, who's, um, really been spearheading efforts on our end. Congratulations to the whole team. The only remaining steps will be the acceptance of the final audit from the MSBA, which will be issued in the next few weeks. The MSBA expects that we should be able to include the LHS closeout on the agenda for the November eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting at the MSBA board meeting. In order to do that within the prescribed timeframes, the MSBA will need to issue the final audit results in mid to late October. The district would then have fourteen days to accept or reject the audit results. Should all go according to plans, the building committee will prepare to go to town meeting with funding requests on November third, two thousand and fifteen. Uh, Kim King is spearheading a bike rodeo for students in grades K to eight. There'll be a bike rodeo in Long Meadow High School's parking lot on October sixth from three to five, and students in grades K to eight are invited to attend. Massachusetts Safe Routes to Schools will be here to teach about bike safety. Students should bring or ride your bike and wear a helmet. Signs and cones will be set up to teach children about riding safely to school. The event runs continually from three to five P.M. It does not take the full hours to participate, so if you only have limited time, that's okay, please join us. If you're available to help, uh, please contact Kim King. Uh, she, you can contact her at her school committee email or call her at six one seven eight zero three eight nine one seven.
Your cellphone just went out.
Kim, thank you very much.
Brave woman, Kim.
Change that number.
Uh, pinwheels for peace. Blueberry Elementary students participated in World Peace Day for a pinwheel activity. Ms. Malikin read the peace book by Todd Parr, and students brainstormed about what peace means to them. They explored what steps they could take to bring common kindness into their own lives and the lives of others. Students then wrote on one side of the pinwheels their thoughts about war and peace, tolerance and kindness. On the other side, they decorated and colored to visually express their feelings. The pinwheels were then displayed outside of Blueberry Hill Elementary School as an effort to join World Peace Day. And finally, elementary and middle school staff development. Charlie Applestein, a youth expert, is coming to Long Meadow on October fifth to engage our elementary teachers. He already presented to middle school staff on opening day, and he received accolades from many people. His topic will be, there's no such thing as a bad kid. He will then return on November fourth to meet with the middle school and elementary staff again.
We forgot to mention that we have a speaker coming on Wednesday.
Oh, dear Lord. I've got that.
I've got that.
You also reiterate about Kim's social security number.
Christine Dubier is coming on Wednesday. Yes. I, I have a list of, these next ten days are kind of busy. Um, any questions for Marie on anything that she presented?
Any other personal info on, on Kim? Can you, can you look it up?
It's a cellphone. Okay. Plus she knows everybody in town anyway.
I'm just making fun of the situation.
All right. So, um, we do have a, a busy next week, week and a half. Um, this Wednesday evening, Christine.
How did you?
Dubier. Dubier is speaking at seven P.M. at the, in the Long Meadow High School auditorium. Um, next week, Monday, the fifth, is an early release day. Tuesday, the sixth, we have our SEAL meeting at seven P.M., which will be in the district office pupil services conference room. Wednesday, October seventh, is a stakeholder meeting with Dr. Rush for the superintendent's search. That's from seven to nine P.M. here in this room, A-15, Thursday, October eighth. He is again meeting with any parents or community members at eight A.M., same location here. And Thursday evening, um, SEAL is hosting John Robison, who will be speaking at six P.M. at the high school auditorium. So there is a lot going on. Um, I'd like to remind everybody that with the superintendent's search, we are asking anybody and everybody to please take the few moments to fill out the survey that's found on our website, um, to help create a profile of what we're interested in or what the community is interested in, um, characteristics for our next superintendent. Also to come out and meet with Dr. Rush to, to have your voices heard. If, if you can't come, that's fine. If you can only do the survey, that's fine. But we encourage, um, the more input we get, the, the bigger picture we get of, of what the community is looking for in terms of moving forward. Um, you know, we're trying, I'm trying to keep the website updated with, um, summaries of, of what we're doing and, and where we're going. So that's always a, a good place to check. Um, Sam, welcome.
Thank you.
Do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, I just have a few updates. Um, as Mr. Clark alluded to earlier, um, the football team, uh, had a great win in East Slone Meadow, um, last Friday. And we, uh, you know, we all appreciate everyone that comes out and supports us. Uh, so this Friday, we're playing Central High School at Central. Uh, it should be a really great game. Um, and then a week after that, we play, uh, Westside, or, uh, Westville, excuse me. So.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I thought we played East Slone Meadow on Thanksgiving.
We do.
So we planned them twice?
We could actually play them three times this year if.
What's the point of that?
Great question.
Well, yeah. So, yeah. So you're right. Usually we just play them Thanksgiving. But this year we play them in our regular season, which we usually, our regular season game with them is usually the Thanksgiving game. But this year it's.
Okay.
And then if the standings turn out that we have to play them in the playoffs, so we could play them again and then play them again on Thanksgiving.
Which happened last year. We played them in the playoffs last year, too.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we played them in Thanksgiving, right before the rule.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. And, um, also, uh, just a quick announcement, uh, the senior class play is putting on, uh, the senior classes is putting on the senior class play. Um, and we're looking for parents, um, preferably parents of, uh, high school students, um, that are, that would, uh, wouldn't mind taking a night out of their, um, a night, just one night, three nights, however, however many nights you want, uh, just a couple hours to be in attendance because we need parents to, for the rehearsals. And, um, we, once we get into the loop of things around a few weeks, we'll have rehearsals like three or four times a, a week. So that's really important for us.
What's the name of the play?
It's Alice in Wonderland. Alice in.
Alice in Wonderland?
No, not, uh, Wizard of Oz, excuse me. Wizard of Oz.
I think that in ninety-one? Sorry.
Yeah.
What? I said they did that in ninety-one.
You won that one?
Unless it was Dorothy.
It was not. I think I was a freshman.
Yep. So we have a cast, but we have to start rehearsals, so we need parents. Um, other than that, I don't have any initiatives to set forth at this time, but, um.
Okay. All right. So finance sub met Wednesday. Um, Liz?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Okay, uh, we talked about a couple things. Um, we had Stacy Smith come in from, um, who does our, um, enrichment programs. And she, um, told us about a couple new programs that they added this year, um, and, uh, some changes that they'd like to make again, um, so that camps don't always coincide with each other, so they, um, lose attendance because of popularity. And also that they need to advertise a little bit better.
And Stacy's gonna come and speak with us?
Yes.
Next meeting, Diane?
Yes.
Is when she's on the agenda to present to all of us about the summer enrichment program and lifelong learning, just so everybody's aware.
Right. Um, and then we had.
If I could just mention.
I'm sorry.
There is a concern there that's been running deficits and they're spending money and they're not taking in enough customers. And, uh, that, that's a problem. And we'd like to see it rectified. It's, uh, it's been getting worse. So.
We're brainstorming.
It's a friendly, well, no, concerned, um, statement that we'd like to see that situation improve.
Um, next we had, um, some extracurricular advisor request for, um, a strength and conditioning club and, um, also to modify the Latin club and give them a stipend for this year, starting the first year. Next, we had, um, our, we have a student activity account and, and we'll need a motion, but we need to, according to the Department of Ed, um, approve it, um, all the clubs by the school committee. And we could do that now? Can I hear a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee approved the request to add a Latin club and a strength and fitness club as presented and authorize the chair to sign the memorandum of agreement.
Here's a second.
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion about those? All right. So it looks, my understanding is that we're taking funds from clubs that are not existing or are no longer active?
Yeah, the funding mechanism that Mr. Dunkerly, uh, outlines in his memo, he's proposing that we use money from funds from clubs that don't operate, but, um, that's not really saving us any money. We did increase the extracurricular line at the high school by two thousand dollars this year. With the addition of these two clubs, I estimate we'll have a deficit of a couple hundred dollars, assuming that, uh, the cost associated to all the other clubs and that they all run will be the same as FY fifteen. So, um, I don't, I don't see it as being an issue in terms of financing it.
And that's still something that, the stipends and the department chairs' stipends are still all going to still be worked on and negotiated?
The, uh, part of the unit MOA was to establish a committee to review those.
Committee to look at that. Okay. Any other questions about the motion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay.
Um, next on the agenda, um, we're also given a, like a preliminary informational FY sixteen budget report. However, um, it, uh, there's a couple things that are, um, it's called encumbered, but then other things that we don't know about, such as utilities, transportation, legal, substitutes, things like that. So it's very basic and, um, just really informational. And if you'd like a copy, you can ask Tom.
It's just so early in the year that.
Yeah.
We didn't actually vote the student activities.
Oh, yeah, we didn't vote this.
No. Okay. Sorry, I don't have this.
Let me read that.
Yeah, please.
Uh, the bottom one, second one. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorize the activities listed on the handout titled X dated September twenty-four, twenty fifteen, for the student activities accounts at Long Meadow High School, Glenbrook Middle School, and Williams Middle School.
Second.
Move a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Kim? The strength and conditioning club on here? Is that called, is that the stroll to strength?
No, we would have to incorporate those. But I also handed out a revised one today.
Oh.
It's just, it's the one in your hand, Kim. It just has the footnote about the principal's discretion at the high school.
Oh.
We talked about it. Finance sub, it gives a little more explanation about the funds within the principal discretion. I didn't add those two new ones on because I don't wanna make an assumption you would approve them. So we most certainly can amend it to include the, the Latin club in the strength and fitnessing, fitness club.
Oh, that's.
So we should do that now?
Well, I was just wondering if we should add them, amend it now? That way we don't have to approve this again?
I mean, there's a Latin club listed. We're just now approving a stipend for the, advisor who will be running it. Um, but they don't necessarily, I don't know that they'll be collecting any fees. We most certainly can wait, come back at a later time if the strength and fitnessing, I don't believe there'll be any kind of financial transactions associated to that club at this point.
Okay.
But just to be clear, this is a revised document from finance sub.
Right.
I did, I think Diane left them out at everybody's seat.
Yeah, you told us you were gonna do that.
Yeah.
So should we amend it? Yes or no?
I would say just as revised.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the motion to.
So the same motion, but just the handout as revised?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that is it? And that is it?
Alright. Legislative report, anything, Michael?
Yes, I have a full report. So, yes, for the first time since, uh, recess, the House is actually in session on Wednesday. And they'll be taking up the FY fifteen supplemental budget. The supplemental budget, of course, is just, uh, an opportunity to close out the year on the FY fifteen budget, so it's just, uh, you know, filling in whatever overages there were. But relevant to us, of course, is there is about three point eight million dollars being appropriated through the FY fifteen supplemental budget being voted on, on, uh, Wednesday. Yeah, FY fifteen. Three point eight million dollars for municipal grants to provide mental health and substance abuse counseling in schools. So I don't know if we're eligible for anything. Uh, it's still has to go to the Senate, which will probably be next week, and then, of course, the governor. Um, and then, so, we'll see. Uh, then, of course, there is, on Thursday, the Senate is taking up a very significant substance abuse package, uh, with about thirty some odd sections, uh, with different ways of combating the opiate addiction crisis throughout Massachusetts. Some of it are additions to the prescription monitoring program. But the most relevant one to schools is the, uh, addition of an ESprit program, which stands for screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. Uh, and what it will require, should it pass the Senate, the House, and then become law, is that local school departments or boards of health will require ESprit screenings to occur at least once annually for students in grade seven through ten. These screenings will be performed by a nurse, physician, or other personnel approved by the Department of Public Health. Uh, and a student or parent may opt out of the screening. Yes, a student may opt out of the screening. Uh, or their parent. Uh, and the screening will be confidential between the student and the administrator, and the screening results will be recorded without any identifying information to the Department of Public Health for the purposes of collecting data on what trends of substance abuse look like. The screening is essentially a verbal screening that would take place. And so the nurse or whoever authorized by DPH would speak directly to the student and ask them whether or not they've been using narcotics or, you know, abusing opiates, whether or not they've been drinking, but mostly this refers to opiate abuse at this point. Uh, the students don't have to answer any of those questions, their parents can opt them out of it. The part of it is, uh, an intervention and prevention program, but the other part of it is collecting data. Uh, the state is very interested in knowing what these trends look like, who is accessing and has access to opiates and other scheduled two and three narcotics, uh, and how they're using them, um, because that's gonna help develop more robust treatment and prevention programs down the road. Of course, we're obviously, and I say this as a school committee member as well, interested in preventing students from abusing opiates now. Uh, but it's very difficult to figure out the best way to do that without understanding the issue. So it is another mandate, uh, from the state, but, uh, you know, it is what it is.
Can I ask you a question about this? Aren't we already covered with our, uh, drug and counseling programs and our health programs? We've got, what, two staff people already? And now this, now this comes on. Is there any evidence that we have a problem here in Long Meadow?
Well, it's not.
Start checking out seventh graders?
So it's not necessarily a problem in Long Meadow, because I think that the statistics indicate it's more of an issue at the senior center, the opiate addiction crisis. I think that that's what we've heard from the police department, is that there's, the senior population is abusing prescription medication more.
Senior population?
The senior.
Over sixty?
Over sixty-five population, according to the police department and, and the town manager. But this is a statewide issue, um, and the idea is, of course, we do have people here who counsel students, you know, abusing or potentially abusing drugs and alcohol. Uh, but this is a screening and reporting mechanism. So, right now, we don't have to report those students, we don't have to report those numbers or the statistics to the state. And of course, it's gonna be reported without any identifying information. So it's, it's more of a monitoring mechanism.
Well, what kind of reporting would we do? Suppose we found out someone was smoking a lot of marijuana?
Yeah.
Would we inform their parents, like that the school nurse discovered this?
Well, no.
Tell their parents?
So it's confidential between the student and the administrator, under the law, but I think it's gonna be up to the department.
Well, I mean, currently.
Oh, currently, I don't know, you can answer that.
Not, not the proposed law.
Right now, we would work.
Don't we already have some kind of protection?
We, right now, um, we have surveys that are given to the students, so we track the data, how many are using. But if we knew, if we knew a child was using, then, yeah, we would report it to the parent.
Well, I think, you know, that's what we should be doing, and let the parents know, and then hopefully they respond and do something about it.
We hope so.
Okay, but I, I, I don't think you've answered the question of why we need this new program.
Well, it's not necessarily something Long Meadow may need, but it's something that other school districts may need. Ultimately, what it comes down to is the, a lot of the things in the law, or the bill, um, are tracking, reporting, and quantifying mechanisms. Because the state doesn't have a really great way right now of understanding exactly who has access and who's utilizing these drugs. We just know that they are when they show up in emergency rooms or rehabs, or, you know, detox facilities. So the idea is, we wanna, the, the state wants to know how kids are, if students are using drugs, how they're using them, how they, how they have access to them, how they, you know, because it'll help ultimately, it'll ultimately help the Department of Public Health develop regulations or guidelines to help curb or prevent that in the future. But you can't really fix the problem without knowing how, what that train, or that trail looks like. So, but that being said, people can opt out.
Russ?
Is there any, um, Narcan component? Do they deal with that or no?
No, um, well, I don't think so, not necessarily in this, but, um, in the budget, there was a huge Narcan component.
Yeah, I saw that in the paper.
Yeah, they developed, there was, uh, the, the budget included a provision to establish a trust fund that would allow municipalities to buy into this trust fund, so they could bulk purchase Narcan, 'cause the price has gone from like thirty-four dollars a dose to like sixty dollars a dose. The Attorney General had convinced with a strong arm, uh, the manufacturer of Narcan to contribute enough for ten thousand doses to that. And so in addition to that, the legislature made an appropriation, the Attorney General's office made an appropriation of her budget, um, and so then the cities and towns start paying into it. So I think Long Meadow would probably be qualified for that. Yeah.
Okay, my understanding, I think at the high school, we've already done training.
Yeah.
And the middle school's in progress.
Right, I, I believe the middle school gets trained tomorrow.
Wednesday night.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Alright, Operations Subcommittee?
Uh.
Did you tell me?
We just met today. Uh, we really s- met only about, um, the green team part of, um, operations.
Okay.
I don't know how, um, that's okay, if we only meet, because it's like kind of an umbrella of different things?
Right. Right.
So anyway, uh, what we wanted to do is, we just wanted to make sure that, um, everyone's on the same page for recycling in the cafeterias and, um, have a list of kind of like procedures and things that need to be recycled and things that shouldn't, and make sure that we have the best, um, setup and, and everybody, um, all the custodians have what they need to do their job properly. And, um, we also talked about, um, let's see, um, we are, uh, we have changed, and this is, they leave a statewide thing from going from having black, um, garbage bags to clear bags. So now, um, we can dumpster dive and see that if people are throwing away paper, that they shouldn't be and they should be recycling. So it's gonna be a really good way to, um, see everyone's bad habits. And, um, we will, we'll be having an audit of our schools and see how everyone's doing.
So you're going dumpster diving?
Um, I'm not, but I would participate if I knew. And, um, and we just talked about, um, you know, who, where we need to do better and hopefully, um, promote some, um, positive, um, praising people for doing a good job instead of being negative and, and just talked about things like that.
So I know we adopted a new, or an expanded recycling policy that started the beginning of the year for the cafeterias, right?
Right.
How's that going? Did you get any feedback yet, or?
Um, I kinda feel like that what we just talked about today, it's kind of like, um, a roles and responsibilities handout, and so we're just, um, re, you know, adding things to that and then going to pass it along.
Great.
So, and, um, Arlene, who is, um, on the recycling commission, works for the D P, who's also on this green team Subcommittee, um, she is also willing to do a training when the, um, custodians have a PD day, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Great. Alright, thank you.
I got one thing to add, um, to mine, to my update. Russ, I was actually wrong, there was something about Narcan in there. Uh, it extends the civilian liability protection, like Good Samaritan laws, to civilians who administer Narcan.
Okay.
Nothing too big.
Yeah.
Just keeps them out of jail.
Alright, um, LPV E C has that?
Uh, I went. Uh, last Wednesday.
This has been busy.
Oh, my gosh, I know. Um, trying to think if anything stands out. We just talked about, um, some salary scale adjustments for bus drivers. We met two new administrators for the special ed, um, and alternative education, and also the curriculum instruction and assessment. And, um, we accepted a donation. We had, um, a bid award for some new, um, school vans. And, uh, we approved, um, their new social media policy.
Was it modeled after ours?
It was not, I don't believe.
Should we have a pair of them?
Ours is better.
Yeah, it's a little different, because it's a different kind of atmosphere, I think, so.
Okay.
Ours is pretty liberal.
And, um, middle school working group, you all met?
We did, we met last week. Um, we talked about, uh, just the purpose of the committee, and John gave us a little history of the middle schools and, and how we actually, I didn't know. We had one middle school to start in Long Meadow. And we looked at the, uh, updated townwide facility study on Williams and Glenbrook and just, uh, talked about some of the updates they included in there, um, regarding the two buildings. And, um, we talked about what we might wanna do this year and decided that we thought it would be a good idea to have a, a forum sometime in the late fall to just kind of give an overview of the two schools and what their needs are and see if we can engage the community and get some ideas and, um, gather feedback from them in this, just this first initial forum. And we are meeting again in a month to try to work on that. And in the meantime, we're just gathering information. Is that the report that Stephen referenced, that was art, referenced in that article that was in the paper? Yes. With costs and.
J C J.
Yes. Are we gonna get a copy of it to review as well?
Stephen said they're still working to refine it, and you'll get a copy as soon as I get one.
But, so the bottom line was, they looked at two, you know, you renovate the two we have, you build one new one. John mentioned in our meeting that we could just do no, you know, there's a lot of different options. You could do nothing, you could look at the capital costs. And I think, once the Subcommittee puts all that together, I think our idea was maybe we have a forum and talk about all the options and the pros and cons, and get feedback from the community. See how important it is, you know, how many people show up, what they think of doing a project or not doing a project. There's really pluses and minuses to everything, and the report gives you some of that, but.
I heard the report was atrociously refa- written, and that's why they're spending so much time rewriting it.
Well, you know, I, I know, but.
I heard Stephen was really upset.
The report's been a couple months now, and I, I think we'd all, we've all been asking to see it, so I would hope that they would be getting.
What's it gonna say, that the middle schools are worse than they were last time they updated the report?
Well, well, the, the cost referenced in the article.
Was twenty thousand dollars.
No, no, to, no, no, the cost to, um, just strictly renovate them seemed extremely high to me. So that's why I'm just curious. And I'd like to see it. And it's as high as to rebuild. Hmm? It was as high to renovate as it was to rebuild. But Russell asked a good question, he asked about the demolition, which was not built into the numbers that we shot. So that adds a couple million on to the, uh.
Well, actually, I think, when I looked into it, um, like in the twentieth page or something, they actually did have it built in. It's just not in the synopsis, for some reason, under demo was blank. But later in the document, it was there, so maybe that's what they're fixing, things like that.
So is it built into those numbers?
It did look like it was. When you look way into the document, it was listed there later.
It's probably like the one that we read, Tom, and were working on last year.
But it, it actually shows, there's a big difference in price, but I think you have to wonder about that. But the two buildings, when you think about to renovate them, it would take a lot of work, really, to make those.
Yeah. I could, I can only imagine what the asbestos removal cost would be, you know, if you had to obey it. Not to get people worried, it's not friable, it's just in the walls and everywhere else. Uh, no, just in the, just in the walls. I know, well, we did, we've done a lot of work to, you know, remove it from like the glue in the, in the floor tiles and, you know, a lot of places where it was accessible, but, I mean, you know, you've got buildings over thirty years old, of course, they have asbestos in the walls.
Okay.
Fun stuff.
And kids to walls.
Yeah.
Touching walls.
Yeah.
Alrighty, so, um, the Calendar Committee has met. At the end of last year, um, we had two community members come forth, um, at our May twenty-sixth meeting with recommendations to develop a less fragmented school calendar and gave some ideas, um, for the Calendar Committee to, to consider. So at that, the school committee had not approved the twenty sixteen-seventeen school calendar as of yet. We did approve the start and end dates, so that the graduation dates and locations could be secured, but did not approve the calendar itself. We had asked that the Calendar Committee, um, go back and, and perhaps look at these suggestions that were made and see what, um, what they could come up with. So that is what is going to be presented to us this eve, or that's what's in front of us this evening. So, I believe, Michelle, were you on the Calendar Committee?
Yes.
You sat in on that, and Marie as well. So if you could maybe give us some information or, or share with us the thoughts of the, the Calendar Committee.
They could probably be easiest to go through this bullet by bullet, because there's so much detail.
Okay.
Um, so the Calendar Committee met twice to consider, to consider all the recommendations, particularly about, from the parents that brought forward that calendar. The very first thing, the school vacations will remain as they are now, one in February and April. That's because the state's looking into possibly merging into a March vacation, and we didn't wanna do that in isolation from other communities. The committee also recommended reducing the number of early release days to four, so that there's more time in school, and have the students released fifteen minutes earlier on the four release days. That way, there's, there's, there are less days, but there's, this amount of time would stay about the same. The committee also recommended moving the elementary conferences in the fall to the same dates as the middle school conferences. This schedule will take some coordination, and they'll be looking for feedback, we will be looking for feedback to see how it goes. Uh, we looked at the spring conferences as well, but it was decided that the elementary conferences could not be held any earlier or later than March, and the, the, um, middle school conferences, they, they felt were appropriately placed. Um, going through the suggestions in attachment two provided by the community members, um, the following should be noted. March tenth is a better spot for Professional Development Day, so we did not move it till April thirteenth. We did move the October conferences. November P D stayed the same because of the regional dat- date to share professional development opportunities. We talked about that before, all the districts try and get one day to, to share our staff development opportunities. We did not move December fifth to nineteenth, because the nineteenth is a bad day for professional development. We did eliminate March sixth Professional Development Day and added time to the other four days by dismissing students fifteen minutes earlier. April third was not moved to April thirteenth, that can be discussed for future calendars. In attachment two, um, in the two thousand sixteen-seventeen calendar, we've provided, uh, a calendar with twenty-six uninterrupted weeks. We've made the following changes.
And what is from, uh, that's, yeah, I'll attach them to, from those community members?
Oh, that's.
And we just, I just wrote the, our little notes down the side.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As to what they, what the Calendar Committee, this is thought of it.
So we did not get to twenty-six uninterrupted weeks?
We do, we did do some.
This is what the community members had suggested.
Right. Um. And he guided some of the discussions.
Guided the discussion that happened.
But September next year looks like a, just a much better month than this year.
It is.
Yeah, I mean, like, you only have.
November is, is a little more disjointed.
Yeah, but I mean, part of that, I think, is just, you know, you got what you do with the early release day, and then you got, yeah, okay. And that's a busy.
I'm kind of disappointed.
What about October here, though? Isn't that? I'm thinking of the realities here. The eighth is Saturday, the Sunday, the ninth, and then the tenth is, that's Columbus Day. And then most of the families in town are probably gonna clear out that weekend, you know? But you want the teachers to come back on the eleventh?
Yes. But that's what we thought. It would give families a break if they wanted to travel. It gives them an extra week, long, long weekend to do that.
Well, what is?
Yeah, well, I think that's what happened just this time. I drove by, for example, the parking lot on the Jewish holidays, and they were empty. It wasn't just because Jewish people were at temple, it was people took off for the long weekend.
Right.
And talking with Bob Barquette over at the, at the kitchen there, yeah, he noted the same thing. His, his whole business just dropped off because people took off.
Now, the teachers.
Do we want to have that effect on the town, or is that worth, is that beyond our control?
It's less disruptive to the school district to have those three days in a row.
Well, let me, can I?
It's less disruptive?
Yes. It means you have other four weeks by putting the eleventh in there.
Yeah, like, you would move it to another week and then make it a four, four-day week. Why not put it right there and give students and teachers a five-day week?
Can I ask a question? With regard, like, going back to November really quickly, I feel like the way the week is set up, it just, it just, or the week of the seventh through the eleventh is
A nightmare.
Yeah, it's kind of annoying. Why wouldn't we have just done the early release day on a Wednesday and then gone, gone that way? Gone like, you know, seventh, do like the nine, tenth, and eleventh?
Because the early release days need to match up to Mondays when the principals have time with teachers. That's the whole point of it, to go till four o'clock.
Faculty meetings are on Mondays.
And the eighth is the day that's the district-wide traveling PD, right? The regional PD?
And the eleventh is Veterans Day.
Yeah, that's a, well, I was questioning their comment, two of the comments. March tenth is a, is a better spot for professional development, instead of moving it to April thirteenth. I mean, I understand maybe April's too late, but why not move it to February twenty-seventh? To the week before?
The comment from the high school was that they use that day in preparation for moving to the end of the school year. They, they use that day organizing for finals and their preparation in getting the students ready for the end of the year. That's what they said.
That's what they use March tenth for?
Yeah.
So is it a difference using it March, doing that on February twenty-seventh? Just trying to get consistency with the kids going to school? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it looks to me like right now, I mean, we, I think we did, I think calendar committee did a decent job of trying to do their best with everything that Sherry and Liz had brought forward. But when I look at November, I mean, November's the one that sticks out to me as the biggest nightmare.
Well, November and April.
Um, April.
I mean, I know we have the April break, but why we have to have a early release day in April?
Right.
Well, I mean, the whole thing, I mean, you've got February vacation for a week, then you're back for a week, and then the following week, you only have a four-day week.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
It's like, I, I don't know, I just.
And I guess that would be my question, is if they're using March tenth as preparation for planning for finals and the end of the year, I, I think what you were getting at was, does it matter whether they do it on March tenth or February twenty-seventh? You know, does that two weeks make a difference? I'm just.
I don't know, I can't speak to the high school and staff, they may be.
I'm just asking.
I don't know, I mean, I feel like there's no, and I don't want to sound like defeatist, but there's no way to there's, I mean, there seems like there's just too much like, I guess, I, I mean, do I, do we, should we really care that like Mondays are the days that all the, you know, principals are ready? Can't we ask the principals and the teachers to like trade off a day and like not have staff meeting that Monday, but do it that Wednesday? I mean, is that the biggest deal?
Not necessarily, well, contractually, the Wednesday meetings are, are teacher-led. So yes, you would have
Right.
you, you would likely get agreement, but you would need to go every time you did that and get agreement to switch it around.
And your childcare issues.
And I think the reason for it being on Mondays was that way it's consistent, the parents know the early release is on a Monday, and, you know.
Sure, but I mean.
Right, but it allows for principal-led PD right up until three forty-five.
Right, I mean, I guess.
So if you did it on a Wednesday, and we didn't get agreement, they would have PD for, you know, forty-five minutes.
Well, is it worth asking them if they'll agree to one of those changes now? Before we approve it?
We could bring it up to admin team.
Just, I mean, like, when I look at it as, as like some, and obviously, I don't, you know, like, I mean, I'm not one way or the other, but if I look at it, for me to like have to have an early release day, and then take off Tuesday, and then take off Friday, like, it just doesn't make, it's not convenient for the parents. And I get, like, I get what, what the pushback would be from, you know, the people working the building, but it almost, to me, also seems like a better deal, to not have to like, you know, to not have to like go through professional development Monday and Tuesday, and then have to teach for two days, and then have a day off. Like, it seems like teach for the two days, do the PD, and the early release day, and then get the day off.
So what are you proposing?
My propose, my proposal would be to ask for an agreement on November to move the seventh and the eighth to the ninth and the tenth.
Well, they can't move the eighth, because that's the regional professional development.
Regional being.
Meaning our smaller groups of staff, OTPT, speech paths, the ones that don't have a, a large cohort?
Yeah.
We tried to work with other districts in the area, and we planned that day off specifically so that we can have, do that. So we can not do that, but it's helpful.
Would there be, um,
Oh, God.
Would there be a way to move that early release from November seventh to perhaps Halloween? Or to put it the day, the Monday after Thanksgiving?
I think we should run it by the principals, if we could.
Well, I, no, I'm just saying, that may be an option, Michael, instead of having an early release day off.
They may say with their Monday, Wednesday meetings now, that they, the early releases potentially aren't necessary. I don't know, so we, I feel like we need to really talk with them.
And I'm not trying to be difficult on this, like, I just, I just, I know what comments I'm gonna get a big wide.
Listen, this is our first full week of school, and we've been in school for months, so, yes.
So.
No, I understand.
And to that, and to that fact, September looks great next year.
Yeah, but look. Well, if you have other specific suggestions, then we'll write them down, and we can reconvene the calendar committee.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
But what are the specific suggestions?
December twenty-third is, is a half day. We changed that this past year to be a full day.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we can do that again here, since they have all of we have.
Well, this year, it's a Thursday. The twenty-third is a Thursday, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we said people have the Friday to travel.
Thursday and Friday they have.
The Thursday and Friday to travel, whereas here, with December twenty-third being a Friday, I think, you know, with travel arrangements and all, I think a half day.
I think that's contractual. Is that right, Tom? December twenty-third?
No.
No.
No, it's full.
No, that's not.
It's just traditional.
Maybe they have to travel.
How long has it been since we visited the value of these professional development days? I mean, for, for the havoc it wreaks on our calendar, and, and the disjointed life it creates for a lot of parents. Is it all that beneficial?
Well.
Or is that inappropriate to ask at this juncture?
I think they're very beneficial in terms of curriculum development. You have, you have common assessments being done, you have a lot of sharing that goes on during those days. We did cut back one this year on, on the proposed calendar. We've gone from five to four.
And, and you've added fifteen more minutes.
But that couldn't be accomplished, say, with after-school stuff?
We've taken fifteen minutes. The kids would get out fifteen minutes earlier.
So that they still get the time.
To make it longer. Right.
Um, I can, don't, and on those early release days, we supply daycare, I know, at the elementary level. So it shouldn't be that much of an inconvenience. We're trying to make it not inconvenient for the parents. And I don't believe we charge for it, if I remember. I don't think we do.
I don't, I don't think we do, no.
And so.
But I can see what Michael's saying, is you have a Saturday, Sunday off, you have a half-day Monday, and then you have Tuesday off. Our kid's gonna be in school that Monday for a half-day.
What, what day do you want?
In November.
November seventh.
Well, the, it's not a half-day. They get out at one fifteen. They get out at quite early.
Right. It just, I mean, like, I, you know, like, the, the upside is, you know, I mean, the thing is, if you, I mean, it's not, it's not a four-day weekend, right? So you kind of keep, you're gonna either have parents that are like, I'm going away for a four-day weekend, and I'm not gonna send my kids on Monday the seventh, because it's an early release day. So I can then take off the eighth, or you're gonna have parents that, or you're gonna have parents that are upset that they have to be here when they could have gone away. So it's, I, I mean, personally, for me, it's either move the day, and then have two days off that make no sense during the week, except for Veterans Day, and then or you, or we figure this, or we, we make it work somehow. And I understand the regional PD, which I was unaware of for that eighth. But the eighth of November.
Sue, can I just ask, and, and I know I'm really thinking outside the box here, which gets me in trouble quite a bit. The early release days are still professional development, correct?
Yes.
In addition to the four full days of professional development that are full days off?
Yes.
Is there a reason why, instead of having four early release days, we could have two days off and two days professional development? You know, those two days be, so instead of saying there's four early release days?
Take the time and use it differently.
Yeah.
Make it that there are two days where students have off, but teachers have professional development, and then have two, the other two days be instructional days?
Or does it not line, it doesn't line up that way?
No, so I would say, so.
So you're proposing adding two more full PD days and taking away the
The four half-days.
But they're not half-days. They're.
Well, I mean, the early release days.
Yeah, I think in, looking back at history, the principals were wanting those early release days to do building-based PD. Things that they couldn't get to or needed to get to.
Well, that was professional communities or whatever, right?
Yeah, they're PLCs, things like that.
Well, and I didn't know, if, if that's something that's still, and, and going to John's question, is that something still of value to them? Now that they have the built-in?
Well, my point is it may be of less value, now that they have the extra time at elementary on Mondays and Wednesdays. So I think we really need to bring it full circle back to the principals and see how that time is being used.
So would that be?
And you couldn't do two days, because it contractually changes things.
And also, the time doesn't line up, because.
Right, well, and I don't mean, whatever the time would line up as, whether it's one full day or.
Or do you do, or you, do you just convert it into two half-days, instead of, because like, if, because the half-day for the elementary was eleven-thirty, right? Roughly, it's like eleven-thirty-ish, and the early release day is one fifteen. So let's say, all things being even, you take away an early release day, you're adding two hours back to that schedule, so then you have two half-days instead of four early release days.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I was just using that as an example. It may be one professional development day for the four early releases. I don't know what the hours work out. But I was just wondering, is, is, is that something to consider instead of, because I think what I'm hearing from everybody who's speaking is that these early release days are really causing havoc, you know, for families and for scheduling. And I didn't, you know, and I, well, I want to respect what the teachers and the principals are doing in their buildings.
Right. Well, the spirit, you know, the spirit of it, because these, these early release days started, I think, my first year on the committee, right? Maybe
No, earlier.
Earlier, I might have been on finance committee at the time.
Or we had late start days.
We had, or yeah, we had the late start days, and we flipped them.
Right.
I mean, the idea was that they would have the opportunity, the teachers would have the opportunity to meet with teachers from other schools, and they would do these professional learning communities. Does that still exist, the way that we kind of envisioned it five years ago?
In some cases, it does, yes. But it's difficult with early release, because the elementary, middle, and high school all end at different times, so you can't do, you know,
Right.
Level.
So I mean, I guess if they all end at different times, you know, what's the value of continuing to do it that way?
I do, again, I'll say, I think we need to talk about it.
I think we should bring it back to the administrative team.
Marry and chat with them about that.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I'm not saying that I don't think the time's valuable, because I think the time is valuable, but is there a better way to structure it?
Right, right.
You know, and I think that's the question that we, we should ask.
And one thing, too, is to realize that the work that the calendar committee did, I mean, I know the parents who had brought forward a proposal, asked, created something with twenty-six uninterrupted weeks. What I was just counting quickly is, this draft proposal is twenty-four uninterrupted weeks.
It's pretty close.
So I mean, it's, it's a lot better than what it was. I think I'm just, you know, as a parent, you know, that, that week in November, you know, but the trade-off is, you know, you get a five-day weekend in October, and, you know, other stuff isn't as messed up. So I totally understand.
Like, it's, it's definitely inconvenient. I mean, if we can't change it, I think the people can live with it, understanding that, of course, it's an anomaly given Veterans Days on a Friday.
Well, we need to check out the PD, is it really going to happen throughout the area? Because if that's not falling into place, then we could go back and look at moving that, if it is in place. I haven't heard any details.
Also, I think it's worth adding that this is still a year out, so we could potentially ask them to just move it to a Thursday.
We can't.
As, I mean, district to Thursday?
Well, could, yeah, but couldn't we do a regional planning session and say, listen, you know, like,
No.
Veterans Day's on Friday, can't we all do, agree that Thursday could be a professional day?
I think it corresponds to election day, and schools close, because they have voting in their schools.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, they.
So close for students on that day, and use it as a PD day in those districts.
So you may be able to get the election day changed, but, yeah.
Can't do it.
And we can't really change.
Presidential election, it's constitutional.
And we really can't change Veterans Day. Michelle, did you have something to add?
Yeah, no, I was gonna explain that that's why it's on Election Day the eighth.
I didn't, didn't even.
Because we talked about this week at calendar committee, and we tried to figure out what to do with it.
I bet, a lot.
So then, do we just?
So we could decide not to participate in the regional PD.
But either way, we've agreed that we were gonna take election days off. I think that was what we did this, like.
We only agreed to it because of the regionalization of the PD. That, that's why.
I think we should do it anyway.
Because historically it happened.
Well, let's see what's planned.
All right, so, so what I'm hearing is the calendar committee's gonna reconvene to talk about the early release days' value.
No.
Well, I think the admin team.
No. Administrative team will talk about that.
Okay.
And again, it's not, I don't, I don't, the way that I wanna, like, at least if I can influence the structure of the conversation a little bit, or the content of it, I don't think, I think the time is very valuable. Is there a better way to structure the time?
Right.
Instead of the four early releases?
Yeah, is it two half-days, is it one full day? You know, I know, I know they don't net out, because the early releases are really only like an hour and a half, in some cases, maybe two hours and others.
Right, and I know we have to watch hours on learning as well.
So, you know, I, I think that's a better conversation than what's the value of this.
All right, so we won't do any voting on this now. We'll table it until we hear more back from the admin team. Okay. Alrighty, so you have your goals that you would like to present to us.
Put a copy of the PowerPoint in front of everyone. It aligns directly to the goals that were in your packets. Thank you.
And just as a reminder for everyone, with the new goals and evaluation tools from the state, Marie's goals fallen, what she needs to create is three categories: professional practice, student learning, and district improvement. So within each of those categories, she is to develop a, a goal that is smart, which is something that's, you know, measurable, attainable, achievable, results-driven, so that we can document that, that it's occurred. In addition, in Marie's evaluation, if you remember, there are also, there are other categories that she is evaluated in that do not directly reflect on these, but is a separate area in and of itself.
All right. As Janet said, this comes from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and there should be three to four goals. I have eight goals. Some of them are continuation of last year's, while some are new this year. The very first area they give us to work on is professional practice goal. So A, oversee effective implementation of the elementary after-school planning time. As you know, it was negotiated in the last contract that the teachers at the elementary level will meet on Monday and Wednesdays. Monday is under the direction of the principals. They will plan the agendas, and Wednesday is under the direction of the teachers. So we're going to be meeting to find out what's, what's going on. We'll review agendas and give feedback. We'll review agendas and give feedback, um, and I'll align, have them align curriculum work with meeting time. We'll be working on the science and social studies curriculum this year as well as health, so it'll be important to, um, align our work. Most important is the new math curriculum, that they have time to write lessons and plans for.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll report back on progress to the school committee in December and June. Student learning is the second area, and number one, increase student achievement. Implement after-school meetings at the elementary level, review the new math curriculum, respond to AmesWeb and MCAS data to make sure that students are learning at high levels. Utilize the wind block, and again, to look at that AmesWeb and MCAS data to make sure that the wind block is, um, operating effectively. There'll be AmesWeb's presentations made to the administrative team in January and June. Where the principals all get together, share their data, and we talk about ways that we can improve student learning. I'll report to school committee in June on the success of, um, of the, of AmesWeb. Second goal, reports from administrative team on data analysis. We'll review expectations with administrators in September. Um, share data with administrative team in December and June, and present data to the school committee in December and June. The, um, window for AmesWeb will be coming up, where students will all be tested in the, at the elementary level and middle school level, and ELA in math, so that we'll take a look at those, um, where they're at. We'll be making adjustments to the curriculum, we'll test them again in January, looking for progress, and then again in June. We'll present data to school committee in December and June. Third, science and social study reviews will happen for the elementary levels this year. Teams of teachers will meet with Susan Bertrand to review the curriculum. Scope and sequence will be developed by June, and summer work will be used to develop lesson plans and units. That's similar to the math review that was conducted last year. B, implement homework guidelines for the district. Um, we've already reviewed the draft with the administrative team, it took a full year to get the draft of homework guidelines where we wanted them. Uh, they were sent out to the staff, parents, and students in September, and they were, they will be reviewed by the administrative team in January and May to make adjustments to make sure. So far, the feedback's been very positive, um, from parents and teachers. Student learning, goal C, roll out, bring your own device at grade eight. Uh, the middle school principals and I have met to develop a plan. We've developed student user agreement and questions and answer sheets. We're going to roll out by January six, two thousand sixteen, that students can bring their own device. We'll review feedback from the staff, we'll develop a communication plan for parent, parents, and we're developing a security plan for locking devices in lockers. Um, I think, as you know, the lockers of the middle schools have always been open, and we're going to be, um, getting locks so that students have a safe place to bring, to put their devices that they bring from home. We're going to determine a timeline and process. The middle school principals will communicate with high school administration to see what went well with their BYOD program. Um, set up a teacher committee at each school, have the two committees from Williams and Glennbrook meet to finalize plans. We'll assess our implementation, we'll develop a survey and administer to staff in May two thousand sixteen. We'll develop and administer a survey for grade A students in May. We'll make adjustments, develop a plan for the rollout of grade six to eight BYOD for the fall of two thousand sixteen, and we'll report to school committee on our progress in May. District improvement is the third area. So A, we're going to explore elementary health curriculum. We'll establish a health curriculum committee, we'll review what is happening in other districts. We'll survey teachers and parents, we'll review curriculum expectations for new grades in six through eight, and we'll develop curriculum and order materials. And we'll create a schedule for the elementary schools to fit, um, health in if it's not part of PE. B, implement new technology curriculum. As you know, technology curriculum was written last year. So this year, we'll review with staff in September, implement, monitor progress by meeting with the technology teachers in January, make adjustments as necessary, assess effectiveness in June by making sure that curriculum has been, that curriculum has been implemented. It's time for us to update our technology plan. Nicholas George is our new technology director, so we're going to form a, a committee that involves, um, staff and community members to look at the technology plan just for the school district. There's also another committee that's going to be looking at IT for the county and the, and the schools. We'll work with the committee to develop a three to five-year plan, and we'll present the technology plan to the school committee. And finally, we'll continue to increase communication, continuing what we did last year. Send out three newsletters in October, February, and June, and then oversee the special programs committee. We're looking to develop a three-year plan. This is, um, year one of the plan that you've seen with Christine Dubivier, Ruth Potte, and our third speaker. So that we'll, we'll have more speakers for the next two years. We'll oversi- oversee the forums for parents this year and publicize parent events. Now, are there questions? Comments?
One comment I'd like to make is you don't have very much to say about social studies, histories. It's, um, pretty much my turn.
There's a, it's an elementary social studies committee that's going to-
Now, we gotta switch.
Okay, that's the elementary.
Right, we're doing it one level at a time?
Are we, are we aligning at K through eight?
It's gonna be aligned.
And so they'll have like a common assessment like our math has?
They will be working on common assessments curriculum. The first thing they'll do is a scope and sequence, then they'll develop, begin to develop, um, units of study and lesson plans over the summer, and then they develop common assessments once they've got the units of study done.
And then we have a plan to do that type of aligning with, is, with the other areas next year, like the following year, like is it-
Well, we just did it for math.
Right, no, we designed the math, and this is the first year we've had common assessments for the math in those grades. So I'm wondering if ELA is up there somewhere?
They're working on common assessments, and they do have some that they do give, so.
They started working on common assessments, I think, two to three years ago in ELA. ELA is such a huge area that it's not, it's not all done because we're adding vocabulary, the word study, which is vocabulary. We're adding, um, we added-
Foundation, we just added foundations, and we just really dug into balanced literacy approach within the last few years, two years maybe.
Yeah.
Really dug into it, so.
It's a whole, it's a teaching in that way.
Yeah.
And now with science and social studies, I know you and I were talking, is it just elementary that's under review? Or is it elementary, middle?
Middle school social studies.
K through eight.
K through eight for both?
And science reviewed a few years back, middle, so.
Okay, so science is K through five?
K five, but they'll align right through.
And social studies is K eight?
If you look behind you, then-
I know, I saw the pretty colored charts.
New standards for science are out, so they're maybe looking at that.
Okay.
K twelve really, to align.
All right. Liz?
Um, when was the last time we did a math review for the middle school book?
Before I came on, so maybe three or-
I think it was-
No, just two or three, because we just got the books.
Michael Sullivan was assistant superintendent, so I think it was, this is the third year.
Yeah.
Of the books, but they're new books.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, I know that we just got the new books for the high school, right? So what about the class that eighth graders take in algebra class, right, like eight point one?
Yeah.
And that should be basically the same book that the high school-
I asked that question last year, and I was told that it's the same concept.
Right, but it's not the same book. Why aren't they using the same book? And they're not, they're kinda are, but, uh, like, I work in a small meta, we're using the, the high school-
Exactly.
Book, the Common Core, and my son's using the eighth grade, and they're very different.
It's a good question, but each of the grade levels picked their own books. And the middle school had a group that looked at it, and they picked the book before the high school did.
Mm-hmm.
And the high school chose to go with another version.
Okay.
But the middle school's very pleased with the books that they're using.
Right, yeah, I know. I, I mean, they're, I just mean because they're, you know, if, let's say a person, a kid fails the, the eighth grade algebra, and then they have to take it again in a different book, I just wonder how that works out.
Is the language different?
Um, I don't know, it's different pace. Um, they're working on, I guess, language is different, different kind of concepts that, the, um, that the Common Core high school one does, is not touching upon. So.
I don't know. Well, I'm wondering, well, just thinking about middle school math, and I'm looking at our new K through five, and I'm seeing a little bit of what is, what that new math program is. How rigorous it seems to be, I'm wondering, is our sixth grade ready for the fifth graders that are doing this new math program?
There's math, so there they are. Yeah, I think they'll be very happy to have the kids come in with stronger math skills. Yeah.
Rose, did you have something?
Yeah, I think it's more a global comment, but with a lot of the goals, what I really look for is how do you measure it? And I, and I have a hard time figuring out how to measure some of these. So increase student achievement, you know, the question would be by how much, what level, what subject? And, and I don't really, I don't know how we'd measure some of these, and I emailed you some of these questions, but a lot of these goals, I just, I see the benefit behind them. It, the question for me is at the end of the year, how do I measure it? And I'm not sure it really, you know, this year is not, um, necessarily something where we have to do that because, you know, you're retiring, and it probably doesn't make a lot of sense to dig into that too much. But I think futuristically, I really would wanna see goals where we can actually figure out what we're measuring, cause I can't, some of these, I'm just not sure how to rate you at the end of the year.
AmesWeb will give you that data. AmesWeb, we can show you where they were tested and where they were in September, and then in January, and then again at the end of the year. So we'll have, we'll have hard data for you, for ELA and math.
So normally though, you'd have a benchmark like, um, we're gonna increase it by X percent in math, or some other percent in science. This would simply mean that it just has to increase somewhat in some area.
I see.
I mean, that's really where I'm, uh, but I don't know, you know, I know in looking at scores over time, it looks like the elementaries, probably their scores are a little lower, although you're comparing it against a lot more elementary schools and high schools, for example. So anyway, that's something with the goals where I really, I like to be able to say, okay, this is the benchmark, this is what we were supposed to meet, did we or not? And that's somewhat hard to do in some of these, not all of them, but some of them.
I have a question.
John?
Uh, Marie, when is the last time our students are evaluated with an MCAS-type test in social studies? Is it the eighth grade?
No, they're not evaluated by an MCAS social studies.
Oh, it's science.
Science and technology, in eighth and five, eight and ten.
So there's no, there's no social studies?
No.
And I thought they were working on a remedy for that.
They've been working on it for years.
Yeah, I piloted, when I was in eleventh grade, I piloted on social studies MCAS.
But right now, there's no assessment to see, I mean, we're, we're requiring students to take world history freshman year, world history sophomore year, US history third year, and the fourth year is an elective in terms of history, social studies, correct?
Correct.
And there's economics and a few other things in there. But no one's measuring whether, you know, they're accomplishing very much with that, or how do they, how they compare with previous classes, it's just-
Just internally, we have our own common assessments that measure student growth, but we, we don't have that comparison to other schools.
What about the AP exams?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, AP exams.
That's an assessment, obviously not everybody takes those, but-
Well, AP though, is sort of like a self-selective, the ones who sign up for AP, you know, they, they take an advanced placement courses. It's like the superstars sign up for that one, in terms of just a general field exam to see, you know, what are we accomplishing? The reason I'm thinking like this is, you know, we've been hearing about STEM and science and technology for the last number of years, and that's where things are going. But what's been the impact on the humanities as a result? And we don't have any data to assess that.
We don't.
Except maybe some anecdotal stuff. That's shame, I think.
Can I also, can I say, um, when Russ was talking about the, um, how you measure the goals, didn't you have like a long-term plan at one point, I thought I remember?
Strategic plan.
Right, and in that, you say, like, MCAS scores will go up by, and you say a percentage in there?
And we've, we've reached those goals.
Right, so I thought that this is kind of tied to that, where you're not saying it per year, but you're saying like in the next ten years, it's going to go up by this percentage. So that's why we don't, you don't say it in here?
Right, and if you look at the strategic plan, we did that year by year over a series, how much we'd improve annual, and it's, it's, it's written out exactly as you stated. We will increase by so many such percentage over, um, a year.
So that makes sense, I mean, I think if that's the case, then the goal should really relate back to that, probably in the goal itself. I mean, my general perspective is, I mean, we can look at our scores and you see some weak areas. Sometimes there's a weak grade or a weak subject. And so we're, you know, we're up in one year, and the next year goes down, and the next year goes back up again. And so if we targeted things like that and said, okay, so what's going on here, how do we fix it, how much are we gonna improve it? I mean, that's sometimes important.
The challenge also is the MCAS won't come out till I'm gone. So you really can't use that as a measurement on my evaluation. So yes, we do have them in the strategic plan. But, um, that's why AmesWeb is the best data that we can give you.
Yeah, and I emailed you about that, I totally agree that MCAS doesn't make sense for you, you know, this year at all.
And I think too, in this conversation, we need to, you know, while I'm all about measurable goals and, and having attained, you know, have we attained what we wanted, w- we're not dealing with, um, you know, product, um, like a corporation or a production line of, can you make this many, you know, within an hour? Can you do this? I mean, kids and test scores, if, you know, if they're sick, if, if they have allergies, if there was a death in the family, if the test was poorly written that year, you know, all of those things play into, did your scores go up or not? So while it's admirable to say, yes, we want, you know, a test score to go up by ten percent this year, you know, is that, i- is that a, a reason to mark you down on an evaluation if it didn't? There are so many external factors that play into it, other than just the, the management of the district, so.
I don't think you do it solely on scores. I mean, that's one measure, and Marie's goals don't just rely on AmesWeb, for example. But I think if we're going to use them, we should use it in a way where we can actually measure it later. I mean, that's, that's really the point, because right now, I don't ha- there's no way to really measure this, because student achievement goes up in what category? You can't say overall, because it, how are you gonna figure that out? It really is a, it's more of a general comment for now, but I think the next round of goals, um, that's something I'd wanna look at.
And I think next time we'll know more about AmesWeb, that we could break that down a little bit more and give you percentages, it's still relatively new. So for me to say that we're going to go up ten percent or five percent, I don't think I could do that accurately just yet, because the data's too new to the district.
Sure.
Cause we only have, what, one full year of data?
We have one full, we piloted two years ago, we have last year's data, so it's really, there, this will be a strong year of implementation, we'll get a sense of what we can expect.
Yeah, and maybe in some ways, it's, it's also more about targeting where our issues are specifically. So student achievement, like in some areas, we're doing really well, most areas really. But there are some areas where it appears, at least from the scores, in some areas that we could do better. And so if we could target those areas and say, okay, listen, it's, you know, if it's social studies, if we had a way to measure it, what are we gonna do about that area? Cause that is what a lot of parents look at too. I mean, I look at it when I, when you see the kids going to a certain grade, and you look at the scores and you say, oh, well, how's that grade doing? And if they dip dramatically, you wonder what's going on. And it could be nothing, it could be just the exam is harder in fourth grade than third grade, you know, who knows? But it's worth looking at it at least.
Any other questions from Marie on her goals?
Cause as a committee, we do have to vote to approve them. All right, so then I'll take a motion.
I move that the school committee approve the superintendent's goals for the two thousand fifteen school year as presented.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Um, we also, the school committee worked on their goals over the summer at our retreat. Um, they have been posted on- They have been posted online and we just wanted to bring those forward to make sure everybody knew that, you know, we, we do have goals that we're working on and, and things that we are looking at in several different categories. There are, of course, budgetary goals. One of the main items in there is to reassess the full-day kindergarten fee, so that is on our plates for this year. Facilities goals, we will be working on identifying our capital priorities for the year and also work to begin a field maintenance plan with the town and, and other bodies. We do have technology goals which correlate with Marie's in terms of the one-to-one initiatives and the technology committee. Policy goals, people services, operations, legislative, strategic plan, communications, and food services. So these are all of what we approved and voted on at our retreat and that we will be working on this year and those goals can all be found in detail on our website. Anybody have any other comments they wanted to make regarding our goals?
I think futuristically, our goals should probably align with more specific, you know, the goal is the superintendent to fix a particular problem and then our goal should align to that to make sure it actually happens.
So do you think that one of the ways we should do that going forward would be to have the superintendent's goals be approved before we set our own?
I think that makes sense. What I'd really like to see is the superintendent figures out what are the weaknesses and tells us, gives us a list of all the things, which it looks like you've done in the past, but that would be helpful and then we kind of look at that list and all agree on what we really need to prioritize.
Can I, can I just ask?
Sure.
So some of these, the capital priorities and the beginning of field maintenance MOI, like, so we've got them as a goal, so now what's the next step? Like, do we have separate meetings? Do we...
Right, so like I am work, I'm on capital, so Tom and Marie and I are gonna be meeting to identify our capital improvements and meet with Chris Reed of what's gonna be going forward and we'll be presenting next meeting?
Yeah, October 13th.
You know, the field maintenance MOU, I think, fell under operations sub. So I think when we were going through these goals, we kind of made sure that they were assigned to somebody's committee.
Okay.
So that they're not just hanging out there unaddressed and we said we're gonna do them and never get to them.
So for, say that beginning of field maintenance MOI, just because I think we're on that, right? We're operations?
Right, so that's operations.
We need to set a meeting for next month and include some DPW and the town manager? How does...
I would start with the town manager.
Okay.
What about the chair select board?
I would start with the town manager.
Easy target.
All right. Any other questions or comments that people want to share about our goals?
Just that, I don't have any specific comments. I just wanna let you go. I just emailed you earlier today, five minutes ago. And Diane, just if you have any dates that don't work for us to invite Representative Bash and Senator Lesser, just let me know. Otherwise, I can work on getting them scheduled.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I will...
Because I know you have, I know you've got the schedule kind of like...
Kind of.
To the best of your ability.
Yes, we'll look at that.
So anything that seems like very busy, you know, just let me know and otherwise we'll...
Yeah, please have them come the week of budget hearings. That would be great.
They would love it, I'm sure.
We can just camp here then. All right, so we do have warrants. Kim, I know you have a huge stack.
I do.
And a little tiny one.
And a little tiny one. Sticking it out enough today.
Thank you.
There you go. Where are my warrants that I need to read on the back? I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch FY16 fund dated October 2nd, 2015 in the amount of $20,636.45.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
You signed it.
Opposed? Or Russ, did you, were you in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
He wants the gold paper.
Well, I'm just checking.
And so I am going to move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 3012 of the general operating fund FY16, fund dated October 2nd, 2015 in the amount of $556, $556,088.16.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Sorry, it's a big one.
It's a big one. All right.
I'm gonna sign that.
I'll sign that one and then we can pass it on down. All right, so we do have minutes. I'll let you, you wanna do the minutes?
Okay, I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the August 31st, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
About one?
Can we?
Yeah, second.
Second, okay, thank you. And now you have a correction?
Yeah, just, I think Alex Matreski's first name is spelled incorrectly. This is very...
Oh, yes, it's a K.
It's quite the, this is quite the deja vu. It's like Gwen.
All right.
That's all I got.
It's a K instead of C.
Yeah, I think it's a K.
Yes, all right, so as amended, any other amendments? All right, so as amended, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? And we do have an executive session planned for this evening, so can I please have a motion?
Sure. I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purpose of strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with units A, D, E, F, and H, and with the nurses to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote.
So I have a motion, I have a, do I have a second? I have a second.
That's a lot of units.
All right. John?
All right, excuse me.
Hi.
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 Okay, thank you very much. Have a great evening and we'll see you around in these next 10 days at these many events that we're having. Have a good night.